I'm Trisha.
We're going to open the meeting of March 11th Selectman's Meeting. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. We are going to start this evening to talking about the Fire EMS Chief Job Description. We were seeking feedback from our new interim Fire Chief. Did you have?
The only issue that we picked up was that it didn't indicate the living radius for the permanent chief.
Right.
Typically, I think, I mean, you try to pull a chief into some commitment to living within 15, 20 miles.
Okay.
Especially within the first year, usually. Other than that, it looked like a fairly generic typical job description.
It covered everything you'd think it needed to?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
It's already posted though, isn't it?
It is.
It is, but if they changed it on the MRI website where everything's pointing to, they could put in, if not a defined job radius, a preferred preference for.
Right.
Yeah, I was wondering if we just wanted to wait until they come in for interviews and make sure the screening committee is aware, because my guess is you're going to have to allow time for anybody who has to move. I mean, you can't really...
Oh, yeah.
We've had a few chiefs in the local towns move. I think Northborough has a chief from New Hampshire. They gave me here to move down. But with this town, my feeling is that a working chief would be what we need more than an administrative chief.
Right.
So that will be someone that could back up the officers.
Yeah, we had talked about it a little bit, but we didn't want to make it a requirement. We were, you know, it could be a preference. Is that all right with you?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I think that should be one of the material factors in hiring the chief.
Okay.
MRI might have to reach out and tell that to the people who have applied. I don't know how many people have applied already.
They'll have telephone conversations with each of them, so they'll get a chance to talk to them if they, to make sure that they know that.
There was only that one fellow that all three of us got emailed on.
Can we maybe send MRI an email just saying that we discussed this and it's important?
Yeah.
What's the radius?
How many minutes?
Usually it's like, as the bird flies, 10, 15 miles is the typical. You know, I think from here to say, if we lived here, I'd say, most towns, say like Weston, Wayland, maybe Wolfham, they ask for that. You don't have to mandate it.
Right.
It would be something that, I mean, it depends if they're coming from the west, they can get here pretty easily, but there's a point where they're not going to make it. And it's just, it's a thought.
Okay. No, I think it's a good idea. Mary, can you send an email to?
Is it 10 to 15?
Bob, Craig, do you want to, do you want to put a number?
Yes.
15?
15.
Preferred?
Preferred.
Okay.
Just from the center of town?
From the, from the...
Perimeter?
Perimeter of the town, I think you go 15 miles is...
In any direction.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, give them some housing options too, right?
So, do I hear a motion to approve the job description with that change?
I think, I think you're going to have trouble since they've already posted it, but...
We'll give it a shot. I think it's worth it.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Hey, and while you're here, I'm hearing some really nice things about you, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking care of the town.
Me too.
Thank you. Welcome.
Me too. And some very nice things.
Yes.
It's early yet, give it time.
What's that?
I said it's early yet, give it time.
It's only been a week. Another week and it'll be live.
We're welcome.
Dave, you want to come on up? Just got a minute or two.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
What do you want to talk about?
Um, I believe...
Monthly report?
Yeah. Let's do that first.
I'm sure, I emailed this, everybody got a copy? Any questions about what was submitted?
I don't know, did I see?
Okay, the only question that came up was...
It's in there first.
The only real concern I have is snow and ice budget's going to get ten at the end of this week. When June gets out of rehab, I'll discuss what the auctions are. I mean, out of her training class. But I've already talked to her about it, and it's not a big deal. It happens every year, so.
Yeah.
By the end of this week, we'll have $10,000 left in our, in our budget for snow and ice, but we're getting close to the end of the year.
Rock, paper, scissors for which roads get treated?
Well, no, we'll be all right.
That's just a letter that the Selectmen signed that authorized you to oversee.
So, I'm not really concerned about that. Little update as far as the storms, we've had 11 plowable storms since the first of this year, 13 plowable storms this season, and we've responded 35 times to snow and ice issues this year.
Wow.
Does it not look like you're running out?
Well, we're right on target with every other. I went back and looked at supplies and stuff from previous years, and we're right where we should be, so.
Good. Well, and then the question that I had sent you, where you would ask for questions to, and I know we've talked about it, and I know it's come up, so I want to toss it out to you again, where you've said that highway and facilities probably shouldn't have been combined, so I want to make sure that we're giving you an opportunity to say, can we start to think about, can we start to think about, you know, as I said, we can't do anything tonight, probably can't do anything many nights from now, but need your input for you to say, you really need someone with expertise and to take care of, to take off my plate, which will allow me to, on the highway job.
It definitely needs to be looked at. I mean, I spend, in my opinion, too much time with the facilities and not enough time doing my highway stuff.
What type of facilities things?
Well, today I was in the Fire Department for two hours just with the overhead door guys. I mean, it doesn't sound like a big deal, but it's two hours out of highway time. You know, it's a quarter of my day. You know, it doesn't happen, I do have all the hours tracked, and it's getting, it's getting less time devoted to facility stuff, but I'm not sure if that's just a lull and it's going to pick back up again. But it's about 30% of my time is spent doing facilities work. So, there's really not enough to warrant a full-time person, so I'm not sure how that would get addressed as far as, you know, it's going to be, it's an issue. I don't know if it's something that, you know, maybe we're looking to hire a custodian that could manage just the small stuff, and that would take a lot of time away from, you know, what I have to do, just, a lot of it's just accompanying, you know, contractors that are in the building doing work, because somebody has to be with them for, you know, where the fuse panels are, where, you know, there's a lot of stuff going on. How do I gain access to the roof? So...
His robe?
Yeah, well, there's a... So, I'm not sure what the answer is, but, you know, I think something that we need to look at long-term.
I wonder if there's something we could do maybe with CMRPC to maybe talk about shared services or something of that nature?
Right, right. What are the smaller, you know, communities like ours doing?
Because I know this is, this is a problem that a lot of communities have.
Yeah.
It's not just us.
Yeah, and I think maybe way back, we did talk about sharing a building facilities person even with the schools, but I think they probably have their hands full right now.
Yeah, I don't think he would be willing to take on our buildings too.
No, no.
I think he's got his hands plenty full.
Yep.
All right. Well, keep us posted. As I say, we want to help, but not quite sure where to help unless you tell us, so...
Well, I'm not sure where the, I mean, it's just time is what it, we need somebody to fill the time that I'm devoting. You know, not necessarily the administrative stuff or the billing or that type of thing, but that would be a huge help, but just the different directions I get pulled in on a daily basis, and you never know when the call comes. You know, you're trying to do something and then...
You get a call.
Yeah, you get pulled away, and it's very distracting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
What do we want to talk about is bylaw while we're sitting here?
Yeah.
I think that's pretty straightforward.
That's pretty straightforward, just the language in it. You know, I don't think there should be any time constraints. I don't think at any point in time, residents or businesses should be allowed to put snow in the road. And if you read the bylaw, that's how it's worded.
Before the first.
Correct.
Yes, and some folks do play that system.
Yeah, it becomes, we've had some issues this year. I mean, most of the time, if you talk to the people, you can get through to them, but not always.
Is it mostly plows?
Correct.
Putting it in the road?
Plows.
Not snow blowers?
No, it's mostly plows.
Is it going across or you...
Across, usually it's across the road.
Right.
And I get it, because it's easy. They come out of the driveway and go straight across the road, because usually there's nothing on the other side, but, you know, woods or a wall or something.
Right, but when you guys come, you pick up that extra snow and dump it at the end of someone's driveway?
Yeah. No, we don't do that.
Yeah.
But...
Please don't do that.
Well, it creates a problem, especially this year, we had, the snow, you know, high moisture content, it was heavy, so if it's not pushed off the road, you come down the road, even though they have big equipment, it's, it's not, it pushes you back out in the road and it creates a mess, and so, it needs to be corrected.
You willing to talk about this at the town meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
Did you want to touch the fee, which is at $25?
Jacket.
Do they get first warning?
We want them, right. The first warning, just, and then it would be, I would say, a fine after that.
It just says now, the penalty for violation of this section shall be $25.
Okay.
So there is no first, no warning type, I mean, other than sending an officer over or something.
Do they get a letter?
We carry letters, a copy of the bylaw, and try to have a conversation with the individual, and most of the time it works, but like I say, not always.
Okay.
So you prefer to have a one warning and then the...
$100 is what I'm proposing.
Yeah.
Which is...
Okay. We can fix the language.
All right.
Will the letter have to come from us, like a formal, you've been reached out to?
I think he just has a copy of the bylaw.
Okay.
Right.
All right, and you guys can track it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. That was pretty easy.
See you in May. We'll invite you up.
Great.
Thank you.
All righty. All right, now, what do we do? Good. Couple minutes. Oh, 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 sorry, Peg.
You forgot.
Yes, I did.
So, this is to Ms. Bennett's class. I promised her that I would send a thank you. Last Wednesday was Community Read Day, and had a chance to go down there. Chris went down there for one course.
At Brolin Memorial?
At Brolin Memorial School. Chief Galvin was down there, Officer Goody was down there, tons of other parents, our superintendent, but they made me this lovely sign, so I told the kids that I would shout out their names. We got Rose, Sarah, Riona, Emily, Hunter, Tyler, Molly, Madison, Jackson, James, and Earl. So, thanks for the invite, and I'll be back in a couple Fridays, and I'm going to be hanging this up, so.
Me too.
That was tons of fun. Great way to start the day.
Yeah, it was, it was very good, very nice. The kids were very inquisitive about the books and...
Yes.
Yeah.
And I read all the places you'll go, so...
And I read Horton, Here's a Who.
Oh, we are here, we are here, we are here. Okay.
All right. Treasures request to excess Town Council for the Sears bankruptcy filing.
Do we know why?
He sent an email today.
No, I didn't see it. Sorry.
Number 13, if you look at the...
Here we go.
You go, Mary, get them all numbered. Trying. I don't know how to organize you all.
Thank you.
So Chris has the whole stack of what bankruptcy court sent?
Yes. I started to look at the attachment and thought, I'm going to let Dennis look at this one.
They're current at this time, but he's concerned about the second half of the year.
Going forward, yeah. I thought Sears got bought.
I think that was part of what he wanted to talk about also, how that affected perhaps what we do or how we follow up. My impulse is always, you know, if the person doing the job is not comfortable with what they're doing, we should probably go ahead and approve.
So it's Sears in the mall and Sears in the building down below? Which ones, are both of them in Brolin, or is only one in Brolin?
The auto store isn't...
It's not in Brolin?
It is, auto store is in Brolin? Okay, there you go.
But it's half the building.
Okay.
All right. So do I hear a motion?
Motion to let Dennis access council on the Sears bankruptcy issue.
Seconded.
Okay. Anything else?
No, it's a large chunk of money, we're going to make sure that comes in.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sure.
Your first name is?
Julie.
Julie, that's right. John had sent an email asking if he could briefly tell us about the project that they have going on 180 River Road West. You've met with several of the other departments?
We've met with the Planning Board, we've met with the Finance Committee, we've met with the Economic Development Committee, and we, we have an article that is on for Springtown Meeting to include this piece in with the over 55 overlay district for this property. So we just wanted to give you kind of an overview of where we are now, and also, this entire piece, let me, let me put up a board and I can, I can better explain. This is an area map, this is River Road West, this is the existing pit area. The entire piece stretches from Summer Road with this dog leg. So, just in rough numbers, we have about 25 acres that we have dedicated for an over 55 type project. We have about another four and a half acres that fronts on River Road, within that, again, with the edge of the pit area, and then we have this 20-acre piece that does the dog leg back towards Summer Road. There's an existing house in the center portion of that back piece. And as you know, this portion also is a butts where Boundless Adventures is and the property that the town has...
Shared, yeah.
...a shared interest in.
Yeah.
So, what we wanted to talk to you about is, one, we've done some research and put some numbers together, and we discussed this with the Economic Development Committee and with the Finance Committee. What we're proposing is a total of 66 units. 26 of them will be single-family style units, and we'd have 20 duplex-style units for the total of 66. We've, and I think we've shared some of these, these are going to be higher-end, upscale type style, where anticipating that singles would be in the 600-plus range. The duplex styles would be five mid-fives. With that and doing with the tax rate, we're anticipating that this would provide, in taxes, over $500,000 annually in tax rate. Add on to that excise taxes, which could probably be another, you know, 50,000 or 60,000. So, we feel that this is a great project. I think it's a great project for the town for financial reasons. We don't think that this would be any burden, any burden. All the roads would be maintained privately. It would be a good project that would really be self-sufficient, and it would be a good project financially for the town. Location-wise, it's on River Road West, it's within a half a mile of the River Bridge Project, it's good highway access, the mall is, is just on another side road. I think it would be bringing good consumers into this area. So, we think that it's a positive project, we're excited about it, we're looking for other boards and committees to be excited about it. But beyond that, we would like to talk to you folks about, you have interest in this property, we have a budding property, we would like to work with the town if there are other opportunities for the town with your land, kind of our property, something that could be an even better benefit for the town. So we're throwing it out there. We, we want to work with the town, we think it's a great project, but we want to make it a better project, and we want to make it even better for the town. So, again, and a lot of people we've talked to, we've said, we're looking at this project, it's 50 acres, what are you going to do with the rest of it? So we want to be transparent. One option that we have looked at is doing some type of solar farm, solar facility. It's south-facing, it, there is quite a bit of a slope there, but would good, it could have good, good visibility for, for solar. But again, we're looking at options to work with the town and something that would be a benefit for the town in this property. So, we want to give you an update as where, where we are now, and, and we're reaching out to try to see if anybody has any other ideas that we could work into our plan for the entire piece that would work for everybody.
Have you talked to fire and police about what they need to do to staff up their forces to cover potential?
We have not, but when we talked with the Economic Development Committee, they suggested, go take a look and see what their calls are. Look at regionally what, what this type of, some of the newer developments, age restricted, I mean, 55 is, I'm 50, so I'm, I'm getting there.
It's young.
But I'm, but I'm not, I'm hoping I don't call the ambulance every, every other Tuesday.
I do think we get an increase in calls from the over 55 community that we have in town, so it is...
We did hear that there is an increase in calls, so we are, we want to address that. People have had the same questions, and we want to give those answers, and if there are ways. And the other thing we heard is, some of the ambulance calls, they are, they're reimbursed, so it, it's not a, it's not a loss, it is a reimbursable fee. I'm not, I'm not sure how that works, but we're going to do some homework so we can provide some answers, some, and hard numbers on that.
And you have a market for this, because I mean, we already have an older 55 community on Pleasant, and one's going up on Highland, and now you'd be at the other end of town, so is there a market for this, or you just, guys are going to just put up houses that will remain empty?
No, there is a huge market for this, and Julie can speak to this, they have these type of projects going in.
We feel that there is a market because we're doing, I have a list here of other 55 developments that we're building now and previous developments. I just have, I just actually have three, if that's helpful. So these are, the first development we, is completed, and the others are, are in progress, so there's definitely a need for it. We're very busy, even being through the summer, through the winter months, so that's why we're not proposing single-family homes. We don't feel as if this is going to be the appropriate place for it.
And from an engineering point of view, I have one project that is in Boyleston that, that just completely built out full, and the developer, they are actually purchased the piece of property across the street from that development, is doing another 33 units, I believe, over there, and he has huge demand.
He's your over 55 also?
Over 55 as well. So, just with the aging, all the baby boomers, I think the statistic is that one in five people will be over 55 shortly.
Soon.
Soon, soon, I'm one of them. And there's a huge demand for, for this type of housing. Downsizing, you have all your services taken care of, all your plowing, your landscaping.
Exterior, yeah.
It's, it's just a, it's a good lifestyle change, you don't have a big house with big fridge.
Stuff you don't want to do, right, yeah.
And what we're proposing with this is, you know, a clubhouse, again, the 66 units, some detached garages, so if a resident has, you know, an antique car or a motorcycle, they want to have some extra garage space, so we're anticipating the, the younger over 55 lifestyle, where you have your toys, you can still keep your toys and have some additional time, you know, free time.
Campers.
And these other developments too, and also learning what the desire was. So we have fourplex buildings, triplex, duplex, singles, and from these developments that we've built, the feedback has always been, they want a single unit that is detached from others, so that's why we added those few where we could in there, in duplexes.
So, it's, it's been in huge demand, and I, in the past two years, I've permitted, well, at least one, one for Van Cottes and Shrewsbury, and I've done three other ones, so they're just huge demand. And a lot of towns welcome because it is a great tax revenue source, and you have, you know, people who are downsizing good, you know, a good family residential style, but you don't have, you know, kids blaring stereos and wanting to, you know, have a big yard with a pool, and it's, it's a good niche.
And decent-sized units as well. These are about anywhere from 2,200 to 2,500 square feet.
But, but again, what we, what we'd like to talk to you about and, and put it out to members of the community, we would, we have additional land that we would, we are opening up, and we would like to work with the town and see if there's other options for other portions of the property that would, that would be a benefit, particularly where you have an interest in the property next door.
Can you tell me, have you talked to planning about this yet? Can you tell me where they're standing on this, or...
We have talked to planning, they raised some of the same questions about, there are other developments in town, you know, would there be an issue with the demand? And so, we've given them the same, we've had the same discussions, we're looking to give more detail. So, they've thanked us for our, you know, the information. We are looking to get a full submission into the Planning Board, just so when, and this is the layout that we are proposing, so when we come to town meeting, it's not, we're thinking of doing this, we want to show you exactly what we're doing and what our plans are, and so the townspeople have, have an exact idea of what is being proposed for this when they vote for it.
I know affordable housing is also a big issue in town.
And we are, with the inclusionary bylaw, we are required to provide 15% affordable, so for this development, and the 40B or the, or the state mandate is 10%, we're going to be giving 15% under the regulations, so that would be 10 affordable units out of the 66. So, not only would that help the town keep up with their affordable housing, it's another 50% higher. So, we think that that's a benefit as well. And other conversations we've had with, with the Planning Board, or as if, if there is something else we could do for affordable housing, I know the, a big concern is that with some units, they don't want to lose, they don't want to lose them off of the, off of the count, and a lot of times rentals help to, once it's a rental, it's, it's pretty solid that it's not going to go off the books as affordable. So, if they're, again, as an option, if there's something that we could do on another portion of the property to introduce rentals, we're, we're really open to anything. It is, is where I'm going.
If for some reason the town doesn't allow the rezoning of that, what are your plans for that area? Just leave it as a pit?
Well, it's a pit now, and it's, it's not doing anybody much good.
Right. But just interested if you had a Plan B.
We have, I mean, full disclosure, we have looked at options for solar. If we did solar on the entire piece... If we did solar on the entire piece, that's allowed by right in this zoning district. So that could be done. The town would get no tax benefit from that at all. We don't think it's the best use for the property, but it's an option, but it's, that's definitely a Plan B or C. And in all honesty, it's, there are a lot of other residential uses around this. There's residences to our west, there is other residences to our east. It's a residential, even though it's in a business zone, it does, it's surrounded by residential. So we think that this would be a good fit in the neighborhood, where it would bring in good tax revenue, but it would still be a less intense, neighborhood wise, less intense use than having a business there. This zone is also, it's allowed for marijuana use, you could do growing, you know, it's allowed. But again, we looked at the option of it. Is it a good fit for this? Questionable. But again, it's one of the few uses that are allowed in this zone. This is our Plan A, and we think it's fantastic. And we would like to give the townspeople and the boards as much information so that they can hopefully be as excited about it as we are. But again, we, everybody keeps asking, "What are you going to do with the rest of the property?"
Have you gotten any feedback from any of the boards?
Um...
Viable feedback?
Well, let me add in too. We are also looking to add walking trails within the development, within the community. There are existing walking trails at some of the tops of the slopes, so where if there is some open space, walking trails that we can provide so that has access through the property. There are other open space areas further to our east. So if we can provide connections for open space and trails, we're more than welcome to introduce that.
Have you talked to conservation?
I want to get into conservation. I think they have a meeting coming up next Wednesday.
Okay.
I want to get in with them and show them the overall plan, and I know that they are interested in connectivity for trails, and we would like to talk to them as well about that.
Yeah. That's probably a good idea.
So, overall, we would like to make this as big a benefit to the town as we possibly can, and be as transparent as possible.
Did you bring copies of your narrative to share with these?
I did, I did.
The board?
So this is...
I have one.
A narrative that we prepared that just kind of gets, and I can, if anybody wants to come in the office and look at that. Just a narrative of the project in general, and how we think this would be a benefit to the town as a whole, so.
You don't have these ready at town meeting? Because when you show something like that...
We're going to have...
We'll have a presentation.
We're going to have a full presentation. We'd like to get in touch with the moderator so that we can coordinate with him to, you know, provide whether it's a slideshow or anything else that we can, so that everybody gets a full idea of what we're proposing and... But in the meantime, we'd love to get as much feedback as we can. We'd love to introduce anything that would make this an even better project.
I think getting planning and conservation in agreement with this would go a long way to getting your support at town meeting. If you don't, I think you're going to have trouble.
We've heard that as well. And again, that's why we're here. We're trying to get as much of the word out, get as much feedback as we can in, and we would like, we would like all the board's support. Ideally, we'd love your support. So please, any information we can give you, we'd love to meet with you again if there's any, you know, open sessions that we can have for townspeople, we'd love to do that as well. And if we could get some input from you, we'll take all the information we can get.
You planning on doing like a presentation?
Absolutely.
Say 19 Carter, or 1870, or even here?
We would like to set that up.
Yeah.
And offline, if I could talk to you about that, so that we can, who I should talk to and coordinate that, we'd like to set that up. And if there's something, a meeting date, and then we could post it, you know, on the town's website, just so that we can, we'd love to get the word out and get as much feedback as possible.
Okay. I think I'm going to have to take some time to think about it, but...
Okay.
Yeah. Do you have an email address if anybody has questions on your narrative?
Yes, I can give that to you. I'll give you mine, and then I can distribute it. JM Grunier, G R. Oh, you have it, okay. So, that's right. So yeah, if anybody has any feedback, any questions, we'd love to engage everybody.
JM Grunier.
At TownISP.com.
Thanks. Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your time.
Mr. McKelk, would you like to come talk to us?
Sure.
Sue, do you want to come up too?
You have to sit in that chair. You block the camera that one.
Wow. We could change, we could shift the chairs.
She's really thought about it.
Yeah. Just saying.
All right. The situation is such that I guess we fumbled capital planning. I was under the impression that we didn't have to renew that every year, but I have since been educated. So what we're looking for, well, let me back it up. The compactor we're talking about replacing has been in service for about 30 years.
Thirty-seven, I think.
It's really gone beyond its typical lifespan. And this past year, we spent almost $5,000 in repairs, and we don't expect that to go down with each ensuing year, because it's just that much older.
Parts are harder to find.
Yeah, when things get older, it's a little harder to find cars.
I'm not even sure that manufacturer still exists. So we're looking at a replacement compactor, which would be pretty much identical to the last new one we put in three years ago, four years ago. And Sue, oh, you have those graphs.
Yeah. I wanted to do, after speaking with you at coffee, I wanted to do something to show you all the hard work that the transfer station does. So I went back, I had all the numbers, I just, you know, we report them, gather them, and add them monthly, and, you know, we put them yearly to the state. But I, because I'm a pack rat, I kept all those spreadsheets. So I went back and looked, and I was quite surprised. I thought I was going to show you how our trash rates have been increasing every year, and it didn't. It went down. And the first one you have, you see the big dip? Well, I am very proud to say that that big dip is when we opened the new take it or leave it shed, and we got the book bin. Now mainly thanks to Dennis Farabee and Peter, because Peter got the shed itself, and he arranged to have all that set up, and Dennis was instrumental in stocking it and then managing it. But it did a drastic reduction in the amount, that's almost 50 tons of trash a year.
Wow.
Almost hard to imagine coming out of the shed, but it all adds up.
But the books are very heavy too, and people only have the opportunity to throw them away before. So that was the first slide. I just wanted to show you that we do actually do good things. And you could see trash is on the rise again, but that's the big factor. But when we brought in the second compactor, we told everyone that we would be able to reduce the number of costs. Now we pay for, we pay, every time they haul out a container of trash, we pay a rate, and then we pay for the trash itself to buy the ton to get rid of it. And both, which costs have just increased as of February 1st. So I went back and I counted all the hauls, which took me about five hours. And as you can see, we actually went from 112 hauls a year down to 62 at our low point. So we did what we said we were going to do. Now, when you had $130 a haul, that adds up. So that has, that savings has helped kind of pay for the new compactor because, and when, if we have an issue with one of them, we still have the other one as a backup. We have, don't have traffic backed up, we don't have to get somebody's front-end loader or whatever that equipment is to go in and try to stomp the trash down so we can get through the day. Because it fills up quickly if you don't have a compactor pushing it all in. And people get upset with us if we close. And the third one is just to show what we've been doing with recyclables, and it's been fairly steady. Now, we are looking at doing anything and everything we can to reduce the cost in the light of this new trash era where people don't want our trash, they don't want our recyclables. Prices, where we would pay $30 a ton for glass, now they want 120. And that's just in the past year. So we are looking at, do we change our practices? Do we recycle? I mean, other towns are looking at the same thing, because you can't get anybody to take it. You know, you can recycle all you want, but what do you do with it? So we are looking at all our avenues along the way. But the second compactor, we kind of need to keep things running. Or, you know, because if one goes down, it's going to be a...
Do you alternate, like each week?
Yeah, what we've...
Well, we'll fill one up completely before we switch to the other one. So we're getting maximum payload.
Right.
And before, we were getting five, six, seven tons. Now we're able to get 10 to 12 tons, which obviously is an increase in efficiency and lowers the number of hauls.
And you need to have a container open for Saturday, an empty container. So Pete would fill up on Wednesdays and Thursdays and have that container, before we got the second one, have that container emptied, so he had a container emptied for Saturday. And now Pete takes all the trash until it's totally full, and then he just switches the tape or the chain or whatever, and opens up the other one, so that we always have an empty one. And we get a lot, you know, it's the haul rates that, you know, if something happens and they have to haul the container away, and it only has three tons of trash in it, because they have to get...
You're still paying full price.
We're still paying for it.
A smidgen or a consumer.
And every time there's been a repair or something, I see my haul rates. The number's going up, you know, and that's extra. It's not just the cost of the repair, it's the extra hauls that we have to do.
Because you need to repair.
Because it interrupts the flow of things.
Right.
But I will say, I was a bad person. I missed the fact that we had to fill out that capital planning form again, but I knew it was in there.
Yeah, and I think, I think Dave had indicated to me that he felt capital planning would support this, and that they may have dropped the ball a little bit on this too, because it was on the plan and somehow fell off.
There's no blame game here. We're just trying to accomplish what is best for the town.
So I think this was just a, kind of an oversight, and it makes sense at least to be to put it on there.
Did I read in an email the number of 47,000?
Yeah, that's wrong.
Thirty-seven?
It's 37.
Okay, it's 37, but an email I had today...
I may have just winged in the wrong number.
Oh, okay.
So then, if you get a new compactor, will the other one just go away, or will you continue to use it till it dies?
What we'd probably look into, it's problematic to keep using it, but we would investigate pulling it out and seeing what the cost to rebuild was, would be, so that we would have a spare compactor on site should we ever need it.
The plastic one was bought in 2000, 2002. So that one's aging.
Yeah. The one on the left, if you're standing in front of it.
Where you throw all your bottles and stuff. That's a compactor back there. You don't really see it.
Oh. Oh, okay.
We have a cardboard compactor, a plastics compactor, and the two trash compactors.
Okay.
And the newest one was purchased in 2015, so, you know, I keep, I pull up the asset list every now and then, and it's like, okay, they're getting older. I mean, they're not like refrigerators, where you buy an old, you know, the old refrigerators would last for, what, 30, 35 years? Now the new ones, if you're lucky, they last seven. And it's kind of the same thing, even with trash compactors. You know, Pete takes ultimate care of that trash compact. He's up there with his grease guns, and I don't know what else he uses, but, you know, they have to be greased and maintained on a regular basis. And, you know, we've just been really lucky so far.
So it sounds like they are trying to put together a longer-term capital plan too. So it sounds like this needs to be put on as sort of a cyclical, they're going to fail about here, so we should be looking at...
Yeah.
And putting this on the long-term capital plan.
I mean, I think we have skated to this point.
So let's not, try not to do that anymore, and make sure it gets on a cycle.
And if we're spending $5,000 or more a year in repairs, it's not going to take very long to exceed that.
Between that and the savings and hauling, you're going to recover the capital expense three, four years probably.
Which is better than most things.
Yes.
And the lifespan, I wonder what the lifespan is of these new ones?
It's just a little less, yeah.
Did you?
I don't know. I'm just guessing.
Well, they're not going to make it so it lasts 20 years. I mean, it wouldn't be cost-effective to the manufacturer.
I know, but you know what? I got married, my microwave lasted for 22 years, my oven lasted for 22 years. Now these things last for five.
Ooh. They're just a little...
I know.
Wow. The transfer station compactor is properly in here at 37.
It is, 37, good.
It's a cruiser that was 37, my bad.
All right.
Continue, right.
That's all I have. I just, but I was so excited to share the numbers with you when I saw them.
This is nice, this is good.
Maybe we could put this up on the website on the...
I don't know, I have a mix trouble.
Everybody's scrambling. Everybody's scrambling. I did, I did read today that China is going to start accepting steel again, scrap metal in July. So we do get a nominal fee for it now, but it's all gobbled up within the States. When China starts taking it, the amount for, the payback amount should increase. That's, I'm thinking that's the first domino. They still have to deal with plastic and paper. But they wanted to give us a slap side the head and say, you know, if you're going to ship stuff to us, it has to be clean, because otherwise it adds work on their end.
Yeah.
You know, even a dirty pizza box can contaminate a load. So then, like for cardboard, we get a nominal amount, $25 a ton. But if you have a bunch of dirty pizza boxes in there, will we just pay for the haul and we don't get anything for the cardboard? Because it's considered contaminated.
And you don't have any notice on your sheets that you hand out saying, "No pizza boxes in the cardboard," do you? Or do you?
I don't know. Take a look.
It should, it should. I mean, we throw ours in the trash.
It should actually probably be on the, the thing where you put the...
Don't worry, the state comes in every year and says, "Oh, you don't have enough signs. We need to go buy more."
But does somebody get training on how to put stuff up on the website? Because you guys can do that now, and this would be great to see up there.
I kind of went through it, I just haven't gotten to that point yet. I will attempt it, then I'll beg someone for extra help. But, yeah, I mean, I had to go remember how to do Excel charts. I hadn't done those in 20 years, so...
This is great information. No, this is great information, so it shouldn't just be here, it should be where other people can see it too.
And at the end of last week, I found a different vendor to get rid of our glass, which as Sue says, we've been paying $100 or $120 a ton. This new vendor who's more local will charge us $50 a ton.
Oh.
And in that, they will take porcelain, like the porcelain sink or porcelain toilet, as long as the guts have been pulled out, and plate glass, which previously had been, those things were not allowed. So with some continual education, we get more people to pay attention to that. It helps keep the trash amount down somewhat.
Yeah.
Well, you can take the glass and grind it into glass fault, which is a real thing that they do in New York. Dave, make our road shiny.
Cut your tires.
I'm not talking shards.
It's a nasty road burn though.
It is, it's a nasty road burn. Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No, this is good information, glad you came in.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
See the roads plowed for the garden, are they like, you know, trying to do this in there or?
I ordered all my seeds, have you?
No, I just looked at planting stuff, I go buy them when they're grown. Have a good night.
Yep.
All right, shall we return to the top?
Please.
All right. Why don't we, we have no meeting minutes.
Well, you do, but for your executive session.
That's right. No appointments that I know of, so we'll talk about the compensation rates for the alternate building inspector, the second building inspector, the conditional looking, local building inspector, and a coverage rate for neighboring building inspectors.
Well, I do, I just have a couple pieces of, pieces of information to share. I think my understanding is that nobody actually talked to Dave Horn after he was appointed, because I don't think that he's interested.
He has been contacted.
Was he contacted? Did you talk to him?
I didn't talk to him.
We got an email on Friday when Richard Hanks was in with Leanne that copied everybody at the same time, saying, hey, everybody, this is who we all are. Our contact information, our email addresses, our hours that we're gonna be covering for one another.
Okay, 'cause I just, I'd be interested to know if he responded, because my understanding is that he is not...
He responded earlier in the week that he understood that he was appointed.
Do you want me to reach out?
Well, I, I just think some follow-up is in order here.
Sure.
I also did talk to Tony Z today, just to ask him a few questions, and he is also, he is fine with continuing as our alternate building inspector, he just was a little frustrated that nobody had contacted him first. He had worked for the town for 10 years for free, and other people were contacted first about being paid. So he was a little frustrated with that, but he is willing to continue to work for the town at this point.
Okay. Well, maybe when I talk with David Horn, if he's not interested, should we see that he can be, I mean, he's got a full-time job though, right?
No, I'm just, I'm just telling you that, you know, as a, as a, last week, he was frustrated enough that he was no longer going to work for us, and he is, he is past that at this point, so he would be available to fill in...
Okay.
At times if needed.
Well, it's good to know.
And could remain our alternate when things go back to normal.
Well, we have before us, um, three, three contracts or offer letters.
I would like to actually propose that we just set a rate for alternates, period, and let Leanne sort of deal with making the calls, first, second, whatever you wanna do, but rather than doing separate contracts for everybody, it seems to make sense to set one flat rate for an alternate.
June says that they would be employees individually, so then if they were employees individually, subject to job descriptions, that they would be given separate job offers. She didn't say that part, but doesn't mean you can't make them all the same rate.
But we kind of always need an alternate, and we haven't paid them up until this point, and we really, you know, I think that's something that can't continue. So you have three essentially of alternates on here, so it seems to make sense to set an alternate rate, so when people are popping in here to help out, when somebody's on vacation or whatever, we have an alternate rate, rather than going through, figuring out every time what this person, that person, or the other person gets paid.
Well, I think in Joe's absence though, I think in order to keep the building department running smoothly and staying in compliance, I, and also trying to keep up to date with what's coming in, I think we need to keep up with the work. And, and so that when Joe does come back, that he's not got a stockpile of stuff to handle. So I believe Richard's been in a couple of days last week, and I don't know about Friday, I think he was planning on coming in Friday.
Yeah, he's coming in tomorrow.
And I believe he's making headway on dealing with what's, what needs to be done first, second, third, and so on.
And I'm certainly not saying that he cannot do that, I'm just saying that we should have a consistent rate across the board for an alternate, and he is, even if he's doing sort of a full-time thing, he's still an alternate for now. And he did that job for $50 the last time he was here. I think probably between 50 and 55 is a reasonable rate for an alternate.
I don't know, in this case, it's a little bit different, 'cause he's coming in and he's trying to run the department and, and keep it...
I, I think 75 is probably out of line. I think that, that's $156,000 a year. 75 is a really high rate.
12 hours to 15 hours a week?
We can pay it, I'm not saying we can't pay it, I'm just saying $75 an hour is a really high rate for a building inspector.
Well, for someone who actually knows the town, has worked here before, it, it's not, I don't think it's out of line. And besides the fact that he would probably, he told me that he would be working elsewhere for that amount of money.
So is there a possibility, if he's at 75 and the other two, three gentlemen are at 50, for cost savings, is there work that, not, not take is a bad word, but is there work that he could look at and say, no, Tom, you could do it, Tony, you could do it?
Right.
Well, I, I think this is a really small community, so if you're paying one of them 75, I, I think you're gonna have trouble saying, Tony, you've been here for 10 years, but Hank is gonna get 75 and you're gonna get 50. I think that's gonna be a problem.
I think what you have of the first alternate, that alternate has a few more responsibilities though than the others who may just have to go to an inspection. We did hear from personnel, got feedback from personnel, we were privy to that information I shared it with Peg and Lisa. I feel as though we want things to go smoothly, it's to the benefit of our building inspector who's out on leave, and it's a benefit to the town, and I think that's what we need to look at right now. It's sort of like a crisis mode, and I think we need to take care of it. And if this is the way we take care of it, so be it.
So Dave, and again, this is from Claire, so Dave is only available after 4:30 possibly on weekends, so you really can't go to him during the week.
Well, I mean, I can guarantee you that he's not gonna work, he's the deputy commissioner in Worcester, he is not going to work for $38 an hour for Richard Hanks.
I think Richard Hanks knows David, and he, and he does know Tony, and he, I would trust that he would be able to call either one of them to ask them to do certain things that he's not unable to do because of his availability. He's not available 40 hours a week.
Nor is Richard, Richard's here two days a week.
No, that's what I'm saying, Richard's not here. That's who I'm talking about. He's not here, and he would call the others to fill in when their availability...
I've told you my reservations here, please feel free to proceed, I've told you what my reservations are.
Okay.
So pretty much, we're governed by what we can spend per week regardless of how we spend it, which is probably $16.80 a week. So who is in charge of tracking hours so we don't go over that amount?
I would assume that would be Richard. We could ask Leanne to do it.
Well, no, I just didn't know, I mean, I just wanna be sure if it's X amount a week that we're only spending X amount a week and it's not doing this, that we're over or under, or over or under. I mean...
No, I think it's gonna be like this, but it's all gonna be under. That's my guess.
Chrissy, he said he would stay within that.
Yes, he did.
Yes. Richard and David, just to add to it, I'm sorry, Richard and David were both commissioners. Tom was at a lower rate, wasn't he, because he's a local?
And he hasn't actually done an inspection, and he hasn't passed all of his...
And he was the...
So there's very little without supervision that he could do right now.
Right, he's got the qualifications that were asked for in the original local inspector...
Right.
Job description that Joe did give, he has all of those qualifications, and he was more than willing and very open that he would be calling people if there was a problem.
Mm-hmm.
So when we talked to both David and Richard about that, both said that they were, they thought that would be a good addition to the problem, because they could call and say, you know, we understand this, can you go check it? And he's close by.
On residential stuff.
Just, yeah, just while you're saying the, the same rate, he was, because of his...
Yeah.
Certification is lower.
And they both said they'd work, they'd work with, and take them on jobs.
So then, then that's why you'd pay a higher amount to Mr. Hanks, 'cause he's the commissioner.
He's the lead.
Correct, and Mr. Dorr can do it, but not a commissioner level.
Correct.
And Mr. Horn has way, but has way limited availability.
He could only do it after 4:30.
But he's probably, his qualifications are probably more, so when you look at that, and you look at the fact that you're paying the other guy almost twice as much...
He, he wasn't gonna make the $1,000.
He was doing it as a favor to Joe, and I think we're past that point, you know, I really don't think, given, given how...
Yeah, and I think we need to put a number on...
I thought that that was 50, and that's why I thought that the next... That's why I thought it was 50. That's why, I'm not, it's, it's only been plugged into that offer letter at the lower rate, but that's not correct for Horn. Oh. It's supposed to be $50 an hour, I thought, because that's what Richard was also suggesting, that any covering inspector, commissioner, like a Tony Z would get on a per visit basis. So is Tony a commissioner?
Tony is also a commissioner.
Yep, they're all the same, the NRP group, were explained as all of the same certification.
And Tony gets paid 54 for his job. I think Dave Horn may be less than that in Worcester.
But they're not managing in a benefited position.
Well, yes, Dave Horn is actually the second, he, he absolutely does manage in Worcester.
But not, but he wouldn't do it.
Yes, and he, he already knows that he's not gonna be...
A manager.
The manager in it.
Like I said, I did...
Well, my fear is that if the board turns down the amount that was suggested be paid to Mr. Hanks, then...
He's gonna walk.
He could walk.
And then we're out, unless you can get Tony Z to step in pretty much full-time.
And he can't.
'Cause he was only supposed to cover Joe for a couple weeks, right?
Correct.
And then he couldn't.
And he, he knew that and agreed to it.
Just a couple weeks.
Two to three weeks. At the meeting, that's what we were told, at that time.
And we're already into week one.
And then, correct. And he was more than willing to do that, but he said he couldn't commit full-time.
After that.
Correct.
So is that working our place?
But he was willing to help out.
Correct.
Which is fine with us.
Everybody's willing to help, which is...
What's fine with you?
That he's willing to help.
He's willing to help afterwards. All the time, you need him, call him.
Yeah.
You know?
Mm-hmm.
And they all agreed to it, you know, they were willing to help.
This is not a permanent...
No, just to fill the gap until Joe was back.
That's right.
And they all knew that.
If he was 12 hours at $75 an hour, that's $900, that still leaves $780 a week. And Dave Horn was supposed to be ready for four, five o'clock inspections at NRP Group, and NRP, I think has told Richard Hanks that they were okay with that. So that's what heavy lifting he'd do, 'cause that's not purely residential, it's more of a commercial type thing when it's at that scale. So the bigger things would be covered, and the smaller residential things would be for Tommy to do.
Mm-hmm.
So would Mr. Horn take the NRP stuff? That Joe got the money for? Yeah. But this is all talking about Joe's salary, I'm talking about there'd still be $780 left of Joe's salary, not even talk, talking about the local inspector's half-pay of $32,000 for this, the balance of this year. Do you understand what I'm saying? I do, I do. I'd be curious to see if we knew what was coming up for requests. Other than finishing off the hotel, which has a 30-day temporary... Correct, and I know that's the big giddy up, that we need to... That's done. We need to, right, okay. And they have, they already know, they have their own gun to their own head to satisfy Hilton, so, he gave them a 30-day temporary certificate of occupancy, and they all, they already moved a mountain in one day of him basically saying it's not, him and Dave both saying it wasn't ready. Shocking. Yeah, right, that's how it always is. And then, it's the apartments, but they're not gonna pull all the permits at the same time, they're gonna look to do three, four buildings at a time. Leanne said that Richard talked to them about that and they were okay with that. So they're not looking to do all the buildings at the same time, which will also stagger out the project over time, so you're not gonna have this massive demand of a building commissioner at one time. It's gonna be smoothly, you know, rolling out.
I think it can be organized such that...
He said he was gonna stay within Joe's salary for all, all people involved, covering Joe's job, but he'd be a manager. Well, and that's just that you need someone at the top to help.
Organize.
Correct, and make sure that you are staying within the budget and the calls are being answered and everyone's being taken care of and no one's sitting and waiting and complaining, so you need oversight, and given that that's a higher position, I would expect a higher level of pay, where your Mr. Dorr, Mr. Horn...
Our current guy who does this gets 42 an hour.
And you read the email from personnel also for that, that's not unusual. It's not unusual for having to have someone come in and fill in.
Well, you're hiring a contractor.
Yeah.
And a contractor can ask for twice, and if you want him, pay him, and if you don't, walk, doesn't, no skin off my nose, I mean, that's what people do when you're a contractor.
Mm-hmm.
So... He said just that, he's otherwise Townsend in Templeton. And somebody else is gonna pay him, 'cause they need him, 'cause there's stuff going on. Or he does, he does his own woodworking and cabinetry and...
Okay.
So we're putting Tony in the mix? Can we make him like a second person if he's around, considering Mr. Dorr's availabil, uh, Mr. Horn's kind of lack of ability, and then Mr. Dorr, who does limited work?
Um, they're separate...
Job offers?
Well, there's, yeah, there's separate offer letters here.
Don't be thrown by the, the Horn one, it should say 50. That's what the suggested rate is per visit for, that's what Richard says he pays up in Townsend for a covering commissioner from a neighboring town. Right, but I'm saying in order of calling, it would be, Mr. Hanks would be first, and then Tony, and then Mr. Horn, and then Mr. Dorr?
I guess so, but that's, I think it would be according to whatever the work is.
Depends on the job, some Mr. Dorr could do.
Okay.
So, Mr. Hanks will make that decision.
So you just put him on the payroll and you pay him when you need him?
Correct, the way that it was...
Okay. Now, we only asked June...
Now, we only asked June today about these three, but I didn't ask about Tony Z being an employee.
I think it's worth actually looking at other towns and how they handle alternates, because I'm a little curious as to whether they bring them in as employees every time. Or how they handle that.
And the only thing, too, to ask is, are they bringing them in to just cover inspections, like Tony was covering inspections? But when there was an issue with plans and looking at things. I think that's another issue to...
Well, yeah, but I think it's worth the question, asking the question about how they do this, because it seems unlikely that they bring them in on this sort of ad hoc basis as employees.
No, I think this is just, this was a crisis situation.
Right.
I mean, it just had to be done. But I think that, the other thing to remember is that Richard's gonna have to look at plans and permits, and is Tony, Tony comes in, is he gonna do that? Or is he just gonna cover an inspection?
Right. Whatever his availability is.
A question to...
And I think that, that's sort of what the first alternate does, is to organize that so that
Just...
they, he knows when they can work, he knows what they can do, and he can organize that.
Historically, he has not done the plan review. It's just he hasn't been asked to. He hadn't needed to.
I'm just, that's one of the questions that has...
No, but he might be able to.
Oh, probably.
At least for the first couple of weeks, so...
Because he would be where he is without that.
I'm sure the three that were commissioners can...
Yeah.
So, what we need to do is to vote the hourly rate, which would be, according to these offer letters, would be seventy-five for the first alternate. It'd be fifty for the second alternate.
Fiddy.
Uh, did you have a number for?
For Mr. Dorr, it's thirty...
Well, it was a range. And then, they made a recommendation on the range, too.
Okay.
Which was?
Thirty-eight oh six.
Thirty-eight oh six.
Okay.
Grade ten, step eleven. That's for that particular hire. It doesn't mean you couldn't have a local building inspector later who was different.
Yeah, the offer for the one that Joe recommended was actually thirty-six something. It was a lower.
Is that within the step and range, both of them?
It's within grade ten.
Maybe you all need to make a recommendation on that? Or did you?
Who? Personnel did.
Personnel did. Oh, okay. Gotcha.
Which was two dollars more than the original guy that Joe recommended.
Good worker.
It's really towards the top of the rate.
And he's qualified.
But this one is a little bit more qualified than the one that Joe was recommending.
Joe went down at thirty-nine.
So, we'll say that one is...
Thirty-six, forty-two. I actually have the email.
Okay.
So, we're talking thirty-eight oh six is what?
Personnel approved.
Thirty-eight ninety-six or thirty-eight oh six?
Personnel approved.
Thirty-eight oh six.
Okay. That's the conditional building inspector. Then, the coverage rate for a neighboring building inspector, would that be commensurate with their abilities, or...
As second alternates, they are commissioners.
No, I'm saying the D, the coverage rate for a neighboring building inspector.
Oh, that would also be fifty, because they're commissioners in other towns. I would think.
This is why I recommended a flat rate.
I think anyone who's a commissioner should...
There is no offer letter for Tony this time, correct?
We should have a flat rate for an alternate coming in.
Okay.
Tony would be, and David Horn would be.
To come in and cover.
Okay.
Yeah, you're right.
Do little...
When we have somebody in, it should be fifty.
Yeah.
If they have to come in and assume or do permits, do all the things that Richard has to do right now, then I do understand that it may have to be more.
Except he did come in and do the same thing for fifty last time.
My voice is going.
Correct.
Which was the same rate that Larry got last time.
Okay. So, is there any more discussion? Do we need to put a motion on the table here?
Have we asked Larry?
I called Larry several times. Never returned my calls.
Okay.
He's probably enjoying his retirement.
Well, which is fine, but I just wanna throw it out there, because someone will say,
Yes.
"Didn't you call him?"
Yes, I did.
And then we can say...
I left him several messages.
Okay.
He's probably at the beach going...
Town of Brooklyn, forty degrees and snow, not a chance.
Right.
So, what, it's seventy-five? I gotta write these down. Seventy-five proposed for Mr. Hanks. Mr. Dorr is the thirty-eight oh six. Mr. Horn is the fiddy. And if we go with Tony, he's fiddy.
Mm-hmm.
And we should vote on these separately.
If you'd like to make the separate motions, otherwise, I'm gonna make one to cover all of them.
I move that we pay seventy-five dollars for Richard Hanks.
Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
All in favor? Aye.
No.
Okay, this one, no. Two yeses. Um, do you wanna do David Horn? Make a motion for David Horn for fifty dollars an hour?
I move that we pay David Horn fifty dollars an hour.
Seconded if that was what was recommended by Personnel.
Yep. And all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Uh, the conditional local building inspector, Mr. Dorr, would be a salary of, or an hourly rate of thirty-eight oh six.
So, moved.
So, seconded.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the, um, I think...
How about we just move that our alternate rate is fifty dollars an hour?
They're commissioners.
Yeah.
Okay.
I can see commissioners.
Our alternates should always be commissioners. They really should. That is known.
Yes.
Because you can't sign unless you are.
Okay, so you made that motion?
Yeah.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. I think you are gonna clean these up and...
Um, so let me muddy it. Did you wanna go retroactive for Tony or not? On this, on what he's done, on, in this...
For the past few weeks?
Well, I thought it was two weeks, and it may have been six weeks, at Leanne.
For the hotel?
No, for anything else that Joe's been using him for. I don't really know how to begin and end that.
They've been swapping, Joe goes over there when Tony needs him. That's what's been happening.
Do we have a record?
Joe would have a record if there was a record, or Tony might have a record, but it's really been, I mean, this has been going on for a really long time.
Whereas Larry never covered for Tony.
Yeah, the arrangements has... Uh, I don't know how, I mean, Joe's had his hands full. I'm not really sure that he was probably able to help out, but...
It might, at the very least, be a nice gesture to pay Tony for the hotel that he spent all day Saturday doing.
Yes.
Agreed.
Why don't we start with that weekend?
That Saturday.
What, I think it was, I don't know if it was Friday, Saturday?
I think it was just Wednesday, wasn't it?
Whatever, whatever.
That Saturday that happened?
Yes.
The fire marshal also went that Saturday?
Why don't we do that?
Okay.
I think that's a nice gesture, and then let him know.
That, okay.
That...
Oh, yeah, one more thing about the offer letters is that the two questions on each letter was the hourly compensation rate, which you've now set.
Mm-hmm.
And do you want to waive pre-employment physicals for everybody?
I don't, I don't think it's, yeah, I don't think it's necessary for Richard, seeing as how he's working right now.
Mm-hmm.
And Mr. Horn is working in Worcester.
All of these people are working.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, true.
And the local...
Tom works for the town. He already has one.
Tom works for the town.
Is he plow?
You need to not make this more trouble than it's worth.
I'm just following the personnel bylaws.
Well, then, do I hear a motion to waive all of pre-employment physicals?
Motion to waive pre-employment physicals.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Done.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Annual town meeting warrant update. Wait a minute. Oh, did, uh... Is this on here, Mary?
So, what?
Is this, are we going to?
If you, if you want to. Oh, yeah, that was another piece of this, is, in the coming year, it is not budgeted part-time wages for any kind of coverage.
Yes, it is.
June said it's not.
Um, it should be. There should be ten... There should be money in there. We should verify this, because I was told that there was actually money in there to cover both Joe and Leanne for alternates.
Sick days, though, right?
That's sick bank.
Sick and vacation days.
What, look back here, 'cause I remember seeing it when he turned in the budget. Keep going. There was a page for...
For putting in money for alternates.
Yeah, that's what it was for.
To be under part-time hourly.
Well, this would be Joe. Is this Leanne? Did Leanne go to full-time wages?
No.
No.
She's part-time wages.
What's the, that's the alternate building inspector.
Forty thousand four ninety-four.
This would be Leanne, right?
Is it the NRP?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This would be Leanne.
So, there's full-time salary, Joe.
Contracted services?
Joe.
Full-time wages, local building inspector, part-time wages.
I don't know that it would be contracted services. I think it would be...
Is it possible it ended up there?
Part-time.
All right, so Joe, NRP, and Leanne, and that's it.
You know, the other thing we can do is we can wait till June comes back. We don't have to do that this week. But this is something that, you know, FinCom's probably...
Well, they're month, what, they're winding down this month, I think, right?
They're winding down, yeah. So, we need to do this next week.
Okay.
Okay? All right, um... Is there just the one copy of the warrant?
Mm-hmm. You have one. Peg already has one.
Oh, all right, okay. All righty. I think I just wrote down a couple of things that we probably need to talk about. Is there other things that you want to talk about, or you don't want to talk about?
Well, I mean, I've read this a couple of times, and I know it's gonna go through town council. But I gotta admit, I'm really struggling with the B on Article thirty-four. You know what? Leave it up to the town to call a select board. I mean, I don't care if you call us a select board. If you call me a select man, I don't take offense to it. 'Cause if you did, I'd have to take offense to being called a woman, or part of a group of women, or a person, or a human, so...
I don't care if you take it out. It really doesn't matter. If you look at most of our stuff, it's all gender-neutral anyways.
Okay. Again, I was just concerned about that. I don't want for that to get hung up. Call us a board, call us a board, call us the Berlin...
Whatever you want.
The Berlin babes, you know, I don't, I don't care.
I will be offended if you call us a board, because that's really sexist.
Well, no, but it's the point, that it's a label. That's all it is. It's, to me, this is just a label, and I've had many jobs in my life where I've had titles, and they don't tell the person that I am. The person who does the job tells the story, not so much the comma title after your name. So, again, put it before the town to call us select board, member of the select board. But, you know, that it requires the use of gender-neutral language, to me, just kind of seems constricting.
Muddies the water a bit. I guess I would agree with that.
It doesn't matter, just take it out.
Okay. Cool. Thank you.
Do we know who is, are we the selectmen sponsoring this article?
I'm gonna go with yes.
It's only written as yes, 'cause I put it as yes, but you all voted that.
Well, I think we voted to put it on the warrant. I didn't know, you know...
There's been a history of holding it, but, yeah, if you're sponsoring it, you're sponsoring it.
Well, I mean...
Well, I doubt any other board is going to sponsor it as our name.
Right, and it's the same as mine for the fire chief, so, you know, we support Lisa's, we support mine. It's the same thing. It came from, comes from one of us.
I'm gonna just drop off the A, just move it all up to see if, to determine whether the town will, blah, amend, no more.
Okay.
Okay?
All righty. Um, who, I have a question about who is sponsoring the one, or what is written, I guess. I don't even know what article it is. The annual town report.
I think that was Finance.
I don't have any communication with Finance.
We can verify, but I think...
Do you know what number it was, Lisa?
It's the back, isn't it?
No.
Yeah, I saw it. I read it.
We can verify that we're going on Wednesday. Why don't we just verify it on Wednesday? Because I'm pretty sure Finance was willing to sponsor that one.
Thirty-eight on page fifteen.
Okay, um...
Because there's definitely a financial impact to that.
Because we have to have a board sponsor it, otherwise, it would've had to been a citizen's petition, right?
Yes.
So, you guys will cover that on, uh, Wednesday for Finance?
Okay.
Well, they didn't sponsor it on time.
Well...
At this point, we need it, so... So, on this one, I just wanna make sure that I'm reading it correctly. So, after five days, when the warrant's ready to go, the selectmen shall cause to be delivered or mailed to each voting household. So, is that the responsibility of your committee? I don't...
No, the selectmen are responsible for getting the warrant out to people's households. So, it is this office, I guess. So, it's gonna be a new task for the selectman's office, 'cause it had been handled by the annual town report committee, 'cause it had been rolled into the annual town report.
So, we have to mail them out?
Yep. And if you have a special town meeting, we would mail out a special town meeting warrant separately. So, this'll be the annual town meeting warrant that goes out with its own postage from the selectman's office and/or special.
You know what? I know that everyone needs one. I really, really do. And I know that everyone has, it's come up in our coffee talk, where people want them earlier to read them. You know, I'm just concerned, the week after the town meeting, I go to throw my papers away. There's all the town reports, you know?
There will be.
And I know...
They don't keep them?
What are you asking?
Do we have to mail?
Mail what? The warrant, we have to mail.
Okay.
Well, you don't have to, if we do this, you don't have to mail the annual town report.
So, Section twelve would say that annual report will only be by request.
That is the...
The selectman's office would honor each individual request as it rolls in to send out an annual town report, which is another, you know, fun thing to do a month before a town meeting, is to be sending out at two-fifty a pop, individually postmarked, um, annual town reports.
Could that be something done under the annual town?
Well, it would be potentially part of the census, I think, is one of the things that was, so we would know quite a bit in advance and could have a list and just run out labels.
I would suggest you just leave a couple of hundred at the door and change that section to say, "The selectman's office will make them available for pickup in the building," but not that the selectmen are gonna eat two-fifty a mailing.
Yeah. I mean, I kinda wanted it to just be pickup, but I think this was a way to smooth over and, and make the people who want it delivered to their door happy. I think that was what was going on here.
So, delivered or mailed is the problem?
Yeah, I would love available for pickup. Here, drop some off at nineteen Carter.
The library, the eighteen-seventy here.
Yeah.
Well, there may be some people who...
I know, but there's also a chunk of people that want...
A book in their hand.
A book in their hand.
No, no, I'm saying there might be people who are handicapped and can't get over here to pick it up.
Agreed. Agreed.
And even the amount of people that don't go to town meeting that still want a warrant.
Well, the warrant would be sent...
Well, then, what are we gonna start checking the voter registration rolls?
The warrant and probably the budget, I think.
You mean the book or the warrant? The book, the book.
So, then, how do I know if I'm not, you know, we're hitting each individual voter household once who asks for it? Or if I get other people who want it, who aren't registered voters, or don't maintain the voter...
The census? What, like, why, why wouldn't we be able to, could we ask the town, the annual town? Why, why, why wouldn't we be able to, could we ask the town, the annual town...
No, I opened your passage, am I correct?
Couldn't it go with the different options, because...
Chris? She's only got some aguas.
One person could go to the town hall, could go to the nineteen Carter, go to the library. Now, you've got a household that's got three.
Point.
Yeah, but there's a limit to how many we're gonna print. We can stop printing over a thousand of these things.
We did talk about that, we're gonna print the same amount that we usually print.
This would be for next year.
How many do you print? There goes her lung down the floor, but, yeah. She's running by.
Is it fourteen, sixteen hundred, something like that?
Oh, gosh, I don't know.
Eleven or twelve hundred that you print for the annual town report. We print more of the, um, because we blanket mail the, the special town meeting warrants. The annual town report is actually stickered to go to the individual households. So we do postal, we're blanketing of the town, but we don't do that for the annual town report.
Woo!
They're stickered.
We were getting ready to call Chief Concannon back up the stairs for, uh, selectmen down in the hall.
I can, I can tell you that we are one of the only remaining communities that mails them.
Again, I understand the importance of having it mailed, and I understand the importance of education and information, but it just kills me to see them all in the trash, so it's, it's, it's dead money.
We have to print them all anyhow, that's the thing, so...
You, you don't have to, if we change the bylaw, though, you, you no longer have to. You would print a small batch for those who wanted them, next year, yeah.
So to reduce the amount next year.
Significantly.
For this year, we have to.
For this year, we have to.
It's essentially the transfer station for a couple of cities.
Not open, it's too cold.
In May?
So really, we're trying to make a decision, do you want them mailed or not?
Yeah.
I am okay with not having them mailed.
How about if we...
I'm okay with not having them mailed.
Talk to Finance Committee about that, too.
For what?
If they're sponsoring it.
Yeah, but they don't, they don't have a say as to whether it gets mailed or not. Whose budget does this come out of?
I mean, we could talk to them about it.
Oh, yeah, if it's mailed, it comes out of the selectmen's budget, because that's what it's saying. Unless it comes in the annual town report committee budget, I guess.
I don't think it...
The selectmen puts in a bill schedule for it.
I think the printing does, just, and the mailing comes out of ours, doesn't it?
No.
No?
Everything comes out of that?
The printing comes out of ATR.
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
And the mailing does, too?
Yes.
I can't remember, okay.
I don't know.
Yes, it does.
I truly am okay with it not getting mailed.
It's my first year.
Sorry to put the pressure on you.
Tricia, we need you to drive around, drop them off.
Oh, I don't mind.
See?
Sure.
See, that's just it, there are, there are alternate ways to get people these things. I would gladly, if, if somebody called and said, "I need one, and I live on Limey, just give one to me, and I'll drive it up the road", I don't care. You know, I'd rather s...
We will.
That's fine, I have no problem, I can take a day and drive around town.
My guys would hand them out at the transfer.
Plane takes Sue with me.
We do seven hundred cars on a Saturday.
Put some at Northford Village.
Yeah, but we don't really want seven hundred handed out. That's the whole point, is most people just...
How are people, I missed how people are gonna know, um, that they have to request them?
If this passes a town meeting, you can go to the census mailer each year.
So, oh, so this is, this, okay, this is for next year, we're talking about next year.
Correct, this year you're on regular...
This year is, it's a bylaw that says we have to mail them right now.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I thought.
So we're trying to alter that, in order to not have to send these to all kinds of people who don't care, and throw them in the recycle bin.
Correct, yeah, okay.
Can you read the verbiage one more time, please?
Oh, Lord, alright, um...
Should we give her a copy?
Section twelve, "The selectmen shall cause a copy of the annual town report to be printed and posted on the town website for public use, and, if requested by any voter, to be delivered or mailed to voting households in the town requesting a copy of the annual town report."
It sounded just like the moderator, didn't it?
Yeah.
Actually, I think Dave wrote that, and, but it sounds an awful lot like Dave, too.
Alright.
So what's the plan?
Changing delivered or mailed. Available for pickup in the town offices?
Yes, available for pickup.
To be available, made available.
Yes, at various locations in the town. I.e., town...
How about you don't put that in there?
No, offices, town offices.
We can do that as a nice gesture, but do not put it in the bylaw, because then if you ever wanna change that, then you have to do the bylaw.
To be determined.
Okay.
No, no, just pickup at the town offices.
Yep.
You put down the general store, and it's not there.
I'll make it go down on Friday morning, bundle in hand.
Alright, was there any other questions that we needed to cover?
We're putting in Dave's for the thing, right? The...
Don't throw your snow in the road?
Yes.
The flowing.
Yes, we are.
Any preference on where?
Where would you like it, Dave?
After Week Chief, we'll put it after Week Chief.
And then, the trash compactor, did we actually vote on whether we're doing the trash compactor?
That's staying in.
Okay.
Yes.
And?
We want more for cemetery, supposedly Barry's talked to CPC, and they're willing to...
Take it out?
Put the, no, put the entire amount in, so they can buy one whole mower, versus half of a mower in the coming year.
Which is buy the other half next year, right?
Only can mow half the hill.
They come like that.
One blade.
They might be able to get some work done with a half a mower, I don't know.
Can we rent goats? Isn't goat cheaper, to rent goats, you know?
They're expensive.
Yeah, they're really expensive.
And they will take everything, there will be nothing left there.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
I didn't ever reuse those.
I was thinking of a goat for the backyard, unless I wanna see my neighbor up close and personal? Alright, nevermind.
So you definitely wanna stick to two-day meeting, yes?
Before Lisa moved in, I had to.
Do we? Or do we wanna just let it natural?
Well, Chris talked to Barry about the idea of, when you shove everything on night one, like it traditionally is, then people can vote as to whether or not they will go past eleven o'clock, because if there's anything that's hanging around loose, you could just be done with it that first night. Otherwise, you have to schedule a second night.
It's most likely gonna be two nights, it's just, do we wanna schedule it, or not schedule it?
Last year, there was twenty, there was thirty-five articles on night one, and four articles on night two. But the four articles were CPC, Town Administrative Study, Regionalization of the Schools, and Marijuana. This time, you still, you still have sixty marijuana articles on second night.
How many?
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Bring your pillows, I'm telling you.
So there's like sixty-four articles on the annual town report.
You know how much money we'd make?
What's that?
I think you leave it two nights, that's just me.
We're never gonna get through two, and people get cranky towards eleven o'clock, so...
I think you've gotta have an agenda, though, to say...
It is, it's part of the warrant, it says it right in it.
No, no, I'm just saying, where we put the cutoff point...
Yep.
That is where we would start the second night, but if we don't get done with the other things...
We have to start from where we left.
We have to start from where we left off, and put those, I would assume, before the other articles, or after.
You'd probably wanna go, keep it in order.
Citizen petition is last, so I think you wanna stick 'em first.
Okay. And that, that would be the language I would suggest if we're gonna do that.
Alright, so who's gonna write Dave's?
I got it, I already wrote it.
Oh, alright, easy peasy.
I mean, if town council wants to...
And then, Tricia said something that jogged. Are we gonna try and reach out to, like, the National Honor Society, or somebody to try and get babysitters, so that more people can come?
That's what I was supposed to do, I was supposed to talk to Julie Lee about that, right?
I, I actually talked with Julie Lee, I was gonna give a little update at the end. I had gone to the link meeting, and they, that was the most important thing that seemed to...
Get a babysitter?
Was to get babysitters, and so, it was suggested that I, um, I call Diane Tussari over at Tejanto, and find out, I believe the Junior National Honor Society is the one that did it last year, and see whether we could work something out, maybe even on an annual basis. So, um, I will do that, if, if that's alright with you guys.
And I'd even be willing to make a donation for, like, water, and snacks, and stuff like that, so...
But I will update you, once I get ahold of Diane.
Because I, I think that's important, you get more people out, to vote, more people involved, when they have a place to...
Right.
Agreed.
A little one.
Yep.
Okay, cool. Thanks for the jog of the memory.
Yeah, no problem, anytime.
So the library septic amount for a hundred thousand or a hundred fifty thousand is still not cleared up?
Oh, yeah, she wanted it to go to one fifty.
Well, she hasn't let us know, has she?
She wants it for one fifty.
I thought that they were gonna talk about that. Again...
She was gonna talk about it with Capitol Planning.
This week, to the other meeting, did I see something come through?
I don't know when their meeting was scheduled.
Wasn't there another meeting scheduled?
I saw something come through, I didn't see the date.
And they were gonna discuss it?
You're right, I think there was, but I don't remember.
It's coming up soon, I don't remember. I saw it come through today.
I think we're probably just gonna have to...
Wait.
The, the language is gonna remain the same.
So we just put in the number?
We just plug in the number.
Yep.
Okay. The only other thing is, we're, Mary, do you think you could poke...
Brian?
Huh?
Mazur?
No, uh, what's his name, Richard, is it? Holland, or Richard?
That's not the one, right?
Yeah, yeah, I just haven't heard anything, I just thought... It, it, I mean, there was...
There's lots of that.
Not from him, though, it was from other people.
Vicky Marsh.
Yeah, it was Vicky Marsh, but it wasn't him. And I thought he was the one who was...
Supposed to be negotiating everything.
Right. Or maybe he's not clear on that.
I don't know, I mean, do you want me to do, oh, well, did we get to that point where we clearly give a directive to town council in writing?
No, we haven't got there yet.
Oh, okay. That might be helpful.
Is that for forty-two?
The POTUS?
Yeah.
The POTUS Solar Array.
So how long are we gonna wait? How long are we gonna dance before we say...
You will be losing money if you don't come up to agreement.
I, I, yeah, I thought we were, it looks to me like we're making progress, that it is going forward.
Well, you just might wanna poke Rick, or Richard, or whatever his name is.
I have been regularly.
Okay.
He's on all of these.
Yeah, but he does not answer.
Right.
That, that, no progress seems to be making, being made. I don't know if you want me, do you wanna ask Brian Mazur to assign somebody else to this? Because, or I can do that.
Or just ask Brian Mazur if, if he's following, if Rick is following up on it? Because we haven't seen anything from him particularly. I did talk to him...
Wasn't Vicky getting grumpy with him today? Wasn't that what's happening?
She's a different piece of it.
Vicky?
Marsh.
Yeah.
She seemed to be saying, Richard, take the ball.
There's two pieces to this, right?
Yeah.
That was on the first piece that she already sent in, or submitted to us.
The conservation restrictions and stuff.
The, what's it called, the conveyance, or something, the...
Covenant.
Covenant. And then, the other part is the, um...
Pilot.
The pilot. Which I haven't heard a thing about, and that's what I asked him to negotiate.
And any part of the decommissioning after the fact? Is that, you had another piece that I thought he was gonna, he was gonna do?
Right.
That's who I put him in touch with, at that Z development.
So other than that, we're good on the warrant?
I think so.
Have we heard from Chief Concannon for summaries on twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three about unpaid prior bills?
They're kinda self-explanatory, but, I mean, I could whip up a little something and see if he likes them.
Alright, that's fine. I mean, again, it's just gonna be, you know, unfortunately, Jim has to answer for something that was done out of his control about why there are three unpaid bills, when Buzz specifically stood up on the floor last year and said, "No more, we will do it once, and no more", and here we are, three hundred and sixty-five days later, doing it again.
Oh, Z said then, I'm so embarrassed, I've never had that happen before.
Well, twice.
It doesn't really matter, though, we've eased on, and we have to pay our bills.
I know. Okay.
Alright.
I don't care, Mary, summary or no summary, as you said, it's pretty self-explanatory. People are gonna see it, so...
Okay. So, moving on. Departmental updates. Fire NEMS, or inspectional services, I think we've probably...
Well, we did those.
Talked about those.
Jim paid them last year, last week-ish.
Well, there was just, this was on here, in case there was anything further.
Alright.
Um, executive recruitment updates.
Town administrator.
Doesn't do anything, is it?
I don't think there is anything, really.
For what, fire chief?
No, no, town administrator, sixteen.
It's posted, but, you know, none of our, uh, job postings...
No, I mean, there's no update.
Well, I'll give you an update, there's no job postings up on our website.
Do you have access to that page? You don't have access to that page?
I don't think I do for employment, I...
Okay, I'm wondering, maybe, well, don't most of them...
Personnel might want it.
Don't most of them come through our office?
I can't, I can't, like, computer all, so... Personnel committee, um, would approve an advertisement, and then could put the advertisement online. But, I'm not saying that even, I'm saying it's not, none of the old content from the website.
Yeah.
It's been a month now with the new website, almost, and it's not over.
I think the expectation is whoever is, um, responsible for the content...
Should be putting it up.
Should be moving it over. This was not my choice, so, yeah.
Okay.
We had A class. I need to get backup, I have no idea how to... But the point is, I mean, nothing has moved over, and I don't, I've asked the webmaster to put it up there, and I'm sure he might be busy otherwise, but we have two major recruitments going on right now, and neither of those are up on our website.
Okay.
That's an update, that's it.
Okay.
So we'll get you assistance to get it up?
I have no idea how to do any of that stuff.
Where Tom go? That's okay.
Yeah, look, he's, he's worse than I am.
I'll talk to Mrs. Pond.
You know how to do it, don't you, Tricia? Do you know that one, or not?
Put somehow on the website, I'm sure I could figure out.
Yeah, and Tim knows how to do it, you can pop over, um, Tim knows how to do it, too. But you need access, you'd need, need a login and access to the page, so you'd have to request that from Tom Galvin.
Alright, so they're both up on the M and A website anyhow, which is where, you're gonna really find them.
Tom Galvin sent me some instructions.
Yeah. You need to, you need to be given access, probably, to the page. Because she can't give you access to the page.
That was in case, just in case.
Oh, okay, thank you. So we're on seven, process for town council?
Yes, we are. Process for department requests to access town council with communications flowing through the Board of Selectmen's Office to frame topics for discussion. So, the suggestion is, the department head makes the request, agenda for the board vote, the admin secretary connects the department head with town council, to ensure the scope of the, of the something approved accessed is defined in writing.
The scope, is it blurred?
To ensure the scope of the approved access is defined in writing, got it. That's the suggestion.
Peg Sardell said that she was surprised that any of this would have ever happened before, because she said she always used to make that connection. And I said, "Of late, that is not how it operates", nor is it necessarily what I've been told to do in my job description, but I'm happy to do it, where I could copy the board, at the same time I tell that department head and town council what it is that you're looking for. But it would stop overreaching and overuse of town council. And it would also put town council on notice not to act outside the scope of what they've been authorized to do.
Well, it's, it's, it can be a problem, uh, you know, when town council gets copied along with twelve other people, and then they all just chit-chat back and forth with town council.
No.
No, just, no.
No?
To make sure that the will of the board is being conveyed to town council and the department has asked for it, you all shouldn't be deliberating with it. You just be, or not, I could just copy the chair, whichever.
Yes.
Well, I, I think most of the time, like with Dennis, he sent an email over that very clearly defined his scope, and I think that's, that's probably reasonable.
Yes.
Yeah.
When ZBA asks for council, they typically send an email saying, "We would like to talk to council about X."
How about department head makes a request in writing?
Yeah, cause I mean, there's been a few times, a couple departments that have said, "Hey, can we talk to town council?" And we've said, "About what?" And we're like, "Well, it's a personal issue."
That's a little too broad.
Yeah.
Because it can spin out.
Correct.
So the question is, do we want to make this process, or this a process?
Yes. Re- request in writing?
Yes.
Um, Mary can certainly do the connections if that's.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
These three will work.
Uh, so number three says CC the board chair, or does the whole board wanna be copied just for the sake of seeing what went back out?
Whole board.
Okay, whole board.
It's just two more words.
Yep.
Okay.
So voted?
So voted.
So voted.
So agreed.
Lisa, you're in agreement?
Yeah, agreed.
All righty, uh, where are we here?
H R.
The H R grant, and I had just sent, forwarded an email from Stephen Rollins. Um, with several consulting groups and.
Now, was his recommendation that we wait?
It was his recommendation that we wait. I just wanted to, you know, get the information to you all and let you decide, do we still want to wait until we have a town administrator to do this H R work?
I think it would be good to have somebody to oversee the project closely, like that. I think it would be positive.
Okay.
Agreed.
Okay.
I'd also like to just, um, remind that J. Teach had also sent over an H R consultant, so we should probably make sure that that's in the mix at the time.
Okay.
I copied you both in on that email.
Well, if you were actually seeking RFPs, then you'd seek, you could advertise for it.
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't wanna do that though ahead of time?
Not yet.
No? Okay. All righty. Number nine is the eighteen-seventy town hall manager. Kinda broke down a few things here, I was gonna. So I wouldn't forget.
Nothing.
So. Um, when I went to their meeting, to town hall advisory committee meetings, town hall advisory committee meeting last week, I learned that the, uh, committee had decided at a meeting that I didn't go to, to be, they would like to be dissolved as of July one, two thousand nineteen. And so I sent you the updated job description that we discussed when I was at the meeting, which just changed, um, who they report to, who the manager reports to. It wouldn't be the town hall advisory committee, it would be the selectman through the town administrator. However, then Evy sent me a job description that she had, uh, put together, which is basically the same thing, but with some different bullets, I, I believe. I think it's the, basically the same thing. I don't know if you had a chance to look at, uh, both of them.
It's actually not in here. I didn't put it in the packet.
Oh, that's okay. I mean, I said, I did send it to the two of them. Uh, the town hall advisory committee felt that the job should be fifteen to twenty hours a week with a salary of, of approximately twenty dollars an hour. Oops, sorry, Lisa. I left it, I left it in the ad as, uh, fifteen hours.
That was one thing that Evy had changed, was making that twenty.
Yes. So I mean, it's a decision of the board.
The hours usually aren't in the job descriptions, so I was gonna take that out.
I mean, I even explained to them that, you know, twenty hours, uh, trips the, uh, health insurance.
No more than nineteen and a half.
Right, so I said it could be fifteen to nineteen and a half. And, um.
Yeah, the, the benefits that go into effect would be more than the salary you're getting.
Right. And the, um, June, I did talk to June. She did some, you know, used her little calculator and ran some numbers and things and, um, if it's gonna be paid from the revolving account, which is what the, we all agreed to, I think, the last time we met with them. It would be cutting it very close. They, the committee is projecting approximately twenty-two point five thousand in revenue. However. We don't know that for sure. We don't know that for certain.
It's just a projection.
Right.
So all expenses need to be taken out of the revolving account too, right, to make sure that you'd have enough to cover payroll?
All of the expenses, I believe, have been taken out, um.
Dave says no.
Except, except.
Fuel, power, Dave?
No, no, um, pests, pest control.
That's very minor, Marlboro Pest Control.
Yeah.
So internet, all the supplies, all the?
That comes out of buildings.
It does now?
So everything, I think, I think they said, except pest control and her Leanne's salary. Does that sound right to you? She, Evy said she had talked with you and.
So that's what's projecting for next year? Because currently I'm paying that out of buildings. Everything gets paid for out of buildings except Leanne.
Right. Oh, really?
In oil, in electricity, sorry.
And, but the pest control hasn't been budgeted for, for next year? Or, I mean, not next year, for this year? You're not still paying that?
I'm not sure.
I don't know. I think we, we do have to get a handle on who's paying for what.
I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure Billings is paying for that. It's not, it's not a lot of money, but I paid two pest control bills and I think that's one.
So, well, this, this town hall manager, um, job is, it wouldn't begin until July one. So.
I think we projected for next fiscal year, they were gonna start to assume some of the expenses out of the revolving account, and I'm pretty sure pest control is one of them.
Yeah, I think she said pest control and, um, Leanne's salary.
Correct.
I don't know if those are the only things, though.
What about Morris?
That you've talked about.
So Morris is, uh.
Oh, cleaning.
It, it's been paid for out of buildings, but it's not, uh, scheduled.
Right. And it's still not a scheduled, uh, at this point.
So nineteen and a half hours a week at twenty dollars an hour times fifty-two weeks in the year is twenty thousand two hundred and eighty dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Oof.
This is the spreadsheet for the revolving account that she sent for FY twenty, which has no pest control or any of that sort of stuff on it.
So it leaves a couple grand-ish, assuming that all those projections come in.
That they make the money.
Right.
They've never made more than fifteen?
Well, they have fifteen, I believe, in the account right now, but it's not.
That's from backing out all the expenses that you overcharged them. Like, remember that there was money that was backed back out?
Yeah, there was, there was, um, I mean, that's what has accumulated since they've been back online, since the project.
So, oh, no, they have not made fifteen thousand dollars in revenue since the, they put them back?
Well, no, there may, it may have been like eight or something, but that's what the balance is right now.
So can I ask the obvious question?
The numbers in red is what is budgeted for next year's.
Okay.
You carry your budget around with you?
Always, always prepared.
Pat on the back.
All right.
So, obvious question. If the projection revenue doesn't come in and you have this person working these hours, where's the one he come from?
There you go.
Captain Obvious.
Shift it back over to municipal buildings?
So there's not, uh, there's no wiggle room as far as salary. I didn't put any in. I mean, that, what's there is gonna cover janitor for next year. There's nothing, there's no extra.
So the custodian is in here, though?
It's in there.
Yeah.
It's like oil and stuff, is that?
That is absorbed through another account that June takes care of, so.
Oil and electricity accounts.
Okay, all right, so that, we kept that too. So this is just this budget. All right. So do we keep it at fifteen and see how it goes with the new person?
I think that might be the better way to go, just being conservative.
They're on the side of caution.
Right.
Because if you're going at the nineteen and a half, you've got two grand to spare, which is not a lot of wiggle room.
Right.
So it's fifteen thousand six hundred.
If you go with fifteen hours, so then you have, uh, seven thousand.
Well, I mean, it, it, the range that we talked about was the grade five pay rate, which is seventeen fifty-nine an hour to twenty-two forty-five. I think it would be commensurate with the experience and, um, probably would go through personnel. They would, you know, have to give their blessing. So it does start at seventeen fifty-nine. But that was the grade that they were talking about.
Just split it in half at the twenty. So you have room to grow.
Well, that's what they were looking for, was the twenty.
Probably would I be okay with just fifteen?
I thought they wanted to get the ad out too by April first, however, I think in her email, she said something a little earlier, like the third week of March or something.
So they still need to run through Sue and company?
Yeah.
Changes have been made?
If you're changing the advertiser.
If you're changing.
And the rate of peg.
So the other thing that, I did get an email today from June. So if they go by the rules of the revolving fund, forty-four fifty-three E one and a half, or whatever, all fringe benefits need to come out of the account. That would be if they, if this person was getting health insurance.
And we're gonna keep them under.
And, uh, if we use the new law, forty, section three, which I don't know if we need to accept first, which would be a town meeting issue. Um, the account can only be used for upkeep of the building.
We can't pay wages out of it?
That's what it sounds like. It says, "No mention of payroll." Hard to get information on her phone, cause she's at school.
So, we're already paying payroll out of there, aren't we?
Yes.
I thought we were.
Yes, but she's going by the rules of the revolving fund and there are no fringe benefits, so that's probably okay. That's what I'm getting from this email.
So we need to talk to June?
Yep, we need to talk to June. What is it that we need to know for the ad, though?
You're sticking to the same, I think this is your redraft, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so fifteen hours a week, grade five, anywhere from seventeen fifty-nine to twenty-two forty-five, like you said.
Right. And then we have to get the, um.
Do, maybe do you want resumes to go to them? Or do you wanna go to the selectmen's office?
Where would they go for them? Would it go to the, just eighteen-seventy, or?
I don't, it would go to Leanne's mailbox. I wanna have them come here and then I'll just give them a whole packet with a spreadsheet, like I usually do.
Okay.
Unless you want them to go, I don't care.
Yeah, why don't you have them go to the selectmen's office?
By May first, who does she want them by? She wants?
What did she say? I think Evy said something in her email about.
Yeah, but, no, we have a whole month of April, never mind. That's not really an April. So it gives people basically a month to apply. By the time we talk to June, by the time it goes to personnel, by the time everything's approved, you're looking at the end of March.
Yes, and I think the important part was, they wanted, because Leanne is taking off the first two weeks in July and, um, they were hoping that this person might be able to start June fifteenth.
And do the second half of June with Leanne.
Right.
Post, post-ad next week or as soon as possible to allow for maximum responses. Resumes due by May twentieth, hire by June fifteenth.
Did I send that to Mary too, so she knows?
Sounds familiar.
I think I did.
Yes.
Okay.
So this is going back to the personnel committee, or not? Well, Evy's changes to the jo- job description would go back.
Yes. Were you both okay with the job description that Evy had? I think it was basically the same as mine, except it was a different format.
And taking out the hours, right?
Yeah. Yeah, you don't want the, uh, job hours in the job description. So.
And who would be on the committee? The screening committee? Abby, Leanne.
Bob and Pat Smith, Bob and Tag?
Yes, um, yeah, the town hall advisory committee plus Leanne.
That was easy.
So. Do I hear a motion to appoint the screening committee members?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we wanna vote the job description then, and the advertisement, and send them to, uh, personnel?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I like this, so moved. It's a lot easier.
No kidding?
Okay.
All right, are we good? All righty. Moving on to number ten. Mary took a shot at drafting, or did you take a shot?
Mary did, and I, and I read it and said, I thought that there were a couple paragraphs that.
Too vicious.
Well, it just came in strong, and I'm thinking, if we wanna do a partnership, then we need to soften it a little.
I see denied, and I'll fix that.
Does somebody wanna work with Mary on softening this rather than trying to do this by committee here?
I can.
Okay.
Uh, Chris, you already took a whack at that, did you not?
Yeah, is that the blue?
Yeah, I didn't do that.
Oh.
No, I didn't.
I didn't do it.
I thought you did.
No.
I didn't do it.
This is like the blind leading the blind. I didn't do it.
I think it's, I think it's you. You're going to sit down.
It wasn't.
No, no, you're going to help her out.
All right.
Okay?
Okay.
Got it. One or twin powers activated.
Okay.
Right, form of.
Yeah.
Okay.
A red pen to fix this thing.
No, not red, that's the abstract. All right.
Okay. Well, there's the solar, uh, solar covenant potus property, which we already talked about.
Covered.
And the highway request for bu- bylaw change.
I have coffee beans in the back room, Peg.
You what?
Chocolate-covered coffee beans.
Nay, I have, I have to get home. I have work to do tonight and a basketball game.
Oh, that's right. All right. Okay, um, other new business.
Are we still on Friday with Holly? Yes?
I would go with yes unless we hear otherwise.
Okay.
And finance committee Wednesday night?
These two, I can't make it.
Yeah. And that's at seven thirty? Okay. I have some new business. I went over to the LINK meeting. I couldn't get my scanner to work today, cause my husband is at home. Oh. This one for Mary, if you would like. Um, so I met with the LINK group last week. Um, I talked about our accomplishments on the to-do list and some of the things on the annual town meeting warrant. Um, they are a very energetic group and have approximately twenty-eight thousand dollars in their account from all their fundraising. They're donating, um, twelve thousand dollars to the new playground for picnic tables and another piece of equipment for the kids. And, um, they also sponsor benef-, uh, events that just benefit the school, school community that are not fundraisers. They were particularly interested in submitting some things for our legislative wish list. I told them to put together a list and send it to us. And then we talked about the babysitting at the annual town meeting. And I'll look into that. And I was just very impressed with all their activities.
Sounds like a dynamite group.
Yeah, it really is. So, that was, that's my update. Anybody else have any new business? Old business?
How do you feel about stuffing eggs?
International women's do it.
Hmm, well, no, I mean, I've talked to Lions, I've talked to the rec. I put a thing out on Women Ares Connect. People seem interested, but the, it's gonna hit the road when I say, "We've got a meeting on blah, blah, blah day." And come, and if no one comes, we don't do, because I don't think it's fair to throw it back on the rec committee. It's not fair to me to take the lead on it. I just wanted to try and push it, so we'll see who steps up.
My two kids and I can come help stuff.
Well, I mean, but it's beyond that too. It's beyond stuffing eggs. It's making sure people are down there and the field is divided and the eggs are hidden and there's everything. It's, it's the, uh, advertisement, you know, coming up with some type of, uh, shoving the backpack to the kids to go home, so it's more than just taking an egg, popping it, taking an egg, popping it for that, so. I threw it out there. We'll see who's interested. I'd love to make it work, but if it doesn't.
Call Peg Stone to stuff eggs.
Hmm, hey, I threw my email out there and said, you know, um, email me. Anybody wanna guess how many I've had?
There is also a Berlin parents group.
Correct, and one of the gals that responded back said, "Do you want me to?" Yeah, and I said, "Yes, please."
Doesn't the library do something too for?
I don't know. If it does, I think it's small. I don't think it's anything, cause we're thinking of the fields, but then definitely have the whole rec to make sure the little kids aren't gonna be running in between the soccer games, you know, which could be kinda funny, so we'll need to do all that, so there's a big planning around that, so we'll see. If it works, it works, if not.
Isn't it too early for soccer? Isn't that too early for soccer?
No, they said that April.
Not, not practice and.
Yeah.
Baseball will be in full, full swing.
So maybe it's a post-Easter, I don't know, but if we can do something, we can do something.
And try not have it on the same day as the fishing derby.
Oh, no, when is the fishing derby this year?
We usually get a letter asking to use the pond, and we haven't got that yet.
Oh.
It's early, cause it was always in the beginning of April. I looked at past ones. But no. But no, I mean, we're thinking maybe the twentieth, and the nice thing is that Leanne forked over the eighteen-seventy house so that if we had bad weather, whoop, we go up there. So, we'll see. We'll see what happens. I'm, I'm hopeful, but, uh, we'll see if people show up and offer their time, rather than, "Yes, this is great." Okay.
All right. Anything else?
April fourteenth, last year.
Yeah.
So, it's still a little early for us to get the letter.
Yeah.
It came the day before. So, I can poke Mike Lee's in and say, "You wanna send it earlier this time?"
Sure.
Fishing derby's on a Saturday?
Yeah.
Yep, it is on Saturday.
So, even if we did the Easter egg hunt on that same Saturday, you just put it later in the day? You don't have it at the same time? What, all the kids will be tired? No one will be awake?
The fishing derby to go to the Easter egg.
No, no, I'm saying if, that you have the Easter egg hunt like at eleven, what time's the fishing derby? Like, it's seven?
It goes, it goes until twelve, and then they do awards, so it goes till one.
Oh, so it looks like it's maybe gonna be the twentieth? Boom, okay. Easy peasy. Don't wanna interfere with the fish. We could save the fish, though, by having the Easter eggs to play.
Fish eggs.
Fish eggs. Okay, I'm done.
All right. We have a quick executive session.
We're not gonna turn it on?
Through Mass Gen, uh, no, we will only be coming back to adjourn. Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one A, one. It's approval of executive session minutes for two eleven.
Done. Do we have to vote?
Yes, vote aye.
I say aye.
Kiff aye.
Stone aye.